in need, in witness thereof. We have here on to set our hands this day of May 2024, signed by Commissioner Savage, Titchnell, and myself. Thank you all very much for all that you do.
Thank you.
We look forward to another 60 years.
There we go.
Community Action Conference last year over, or last week in Maryland, in Ocean City, and got to meet with people all across the state that do this work, and it is incredible just to be a part of that network and to be able to do it here in Garrett County is wonderful. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
It'll be a nice party. Tell me. We're making change.
Okay. Next up, we have Poppy Day, May 24th, 2024. And I see the Poppy Queens. Who have been involved in this for a long time. Proclamation for National Poppy Day, May 24th, 2024. Whereas the Board of Garrett County Commissioners and the citizens of Garrett County recognize the importance of honoring those that have worn our nation's uniform, and whereas at the end of World War I, the American Legion adopted a red poppy as its official flower, symbolizing the bloodshed by those who have served in the US military. Poppies are worn and displayed as a symbolic tribute to our fallen and the future of living veterans, service members. And whereas the use of the poppy symbolically comes from the poem in Flanders Fields, which movingly begins, "In Flanders Fields, the poppies blow between the crosses, row on row," referring to the poppies that sprang up in the churned earth battlefields across Belgium and France where soldiers died fighting. And whereas wearing a poppy unites citizens from across America by showing their patriotism, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners officially designates Friday, May 24th, 2024, as National Poppy Day in Garrett County, and encourages all residents and visitors to join in observing this day, along with the American Legion, to honor every servicemember who has died in the name of liberty, freedom, and democracy, while also showing their support for living veterans, service members, and their families. Signed by Commissioner Savage, Titchnell, and myself. Thank you very much for your advocacy.
And then on behalf of the American Union Auxiliary, Unit 71, we would like to present each of you with one of these poppy pins.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
You go ahead. Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it goes in a shirt, not in your skin.
I don't have a pump.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we do have a resolution. This resolution is for Garrett County Health Department opioid funding plan, and it is Resolution Number 2024-05-21, and is a resolution establishing a dedicated fund for the receipt and disbursement of and account for proceeds from the settlements of litigation involving the state of Maryland and certain subdivisions, and further appoint Garrett County Health Department as a designated agency to distribute funds based upon an opioid abatement plan to account for such funds and report to the Board of County Commissioners on the use of those funds. Any questions? So basically, this is, most of you are familiar and aware that there's litigation money in Maryland for the use of opioids. That money's going back to the 23 counties in Baltimore City. In a couple of different ways, this set of money, this resolution designates the Health Department as the recipient of that money to work on those programs for people that have issues with opioid abuse and so on and so forth. So that's what this does. If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-05-21.
Make the motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll have you all sign that.
One of Bob's last official acts.
There you go. Congratulations, Bob.
I said, "One of your last official acts."
And I would just like to be clear that the Health Department's not spending all the money. We're passing it through to various community organizations that all address the issues around the view.
And so it will address, it will be prevention measures, but it will also be treatment measures?
Yes, treatment, some intervention, and some recovery.
Great, thank you. Okay, the last action item on the agenda, last meeting, we had a public hearing on a CDBG grant for Citizen Participation and Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan. To my knowledge, Mr. Knoll, we have received no public comment on that.
That is correct. No public comment has been received.
So, no public comment received. What I will need from the Commission is a motion to approve that application and move forward in that process. Are there any questions? If there are no questions, do we have a motion to adopt that assistance plan?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we go into the presentation on the operating capital budget by our finance team, just real quick announcement, the only announcement we have, our next meeting will be June 3rd here, normal meeting date, normal meeting time, and we will be approving, we will be adopting the budget that meeting. So, the budget hearing will be today. There'll be a comment period open from today until the 3rd, and then on the 3rd, unless something comes out of those comments, the anticipation is that we would adopt the budget on the 3rd. So that is the only announcement. I will hold questions and comments from the audience until after the presentation, in case there are questions about that. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Finance Director and his team, Mr. Scott Weeks.
Thank you, Chairman Edwards. This is the most wonderful time of the year in the finance world. It's one of the biggest things we do as county government. It's one of the biggest things that Commissioners have responsibility for is the budget. So, we're gonna jump right in. I'm gonna preface this. Am I in line here?
Yeah.
With the script? Slide shows. I want to preface the presentation with, last year, you might recall, I said, "This time next year, you're probably gonna hear the same exact story." And that's probably what you're gonna hear today. I bet you if you go back to last year's presentation and hit the play button, you're gonna hear something very similar. So we're gonna jump right in to the budget. We'll look at our revenues, first of all. Again, this is very similar to what you saw last year, except the bottom line, we're looking at about $9.8 million of new revenue. That figure is distorted by a couple different things. As you can see, you'll see two lines there, federal grants and state grants. They always distort the bottom line of the revenue budget. The state grant, we have a $1.5 million INSB grant. I'm gonna get to that capital expenditure later, but it's 100% funded capital expenditure for the 911 phone system refresh, so that's about 1.5 that's distorting it. The federal grants, you can see that it is reduced, and, let's see, we got Mike here today from Mass Transit. That's just a guess at that grant and what it's gonna be, so that's distorting it a little bit. We either had last year's figure too high, or this year's figure too low, or a combination thereof, but we're showing about a 551, 912 reduction, and the main driver of that is the Mass Transit grant. It's not all attributable to that. The other line item I want to point out is the investment income. We really don't bake the investment income into our operating budget. As you know, market rates, they fluctuate, and we like to use that line item for one-time capital expenditures, so we don't get reliant on it. As you know, interest rates a couple of years ago were zero to half percent. Now, we're earning about 5.4 on our overnight funds, which is pretty commendable rate in today's market. So, if you back those out, those items out, I mean, it's really that first line item of real property tax that is really our new revenue. You're gonna see $7.9 million. That figure does not surprise us at all, and here in a moment, I'm gonna tell you what we plan to do with those funds. 7.9 last year, as you know, Group 2 of the assessments were, Group 2 of our property assessments were assessed, and we're on year 2 of Group 2. That was the majority of the lakefront properties, which drove up our tax revenue about $5 million. This year, Group 3 was reassessed, and we're picking up about $2 million from that, that group, and then we have about $800,000 of new construction estimates. Again, they're just estimates built into that figure. The thing that we need to keep in mind, everybody needs to keep in mind, is we're projecting, once we get to fiscal year '28, that our tax revenue will remain, go back, flatten out, and remain maybe stagnant for a while. Our hope is that it doesn't decrease like it did back in 2008, and we lost $4 to $5 million overnight. So, we hope that it, we will see some growth, but we're, in our models, we're only projecting about a half to 1% of growths. Breaking this revenue down a little further, these are the 12 categories that are the biggest, that we really focus on. We call it the Big 12 categories. It makes up 94% of our revenue budget, so we focus on these Big 12 categories throughout the process. It's broken down a little bit further, but in those categories, you have $8.6 million of new revenue. Again, the investment income is distorting that a little bit. One thing I wanted to point out to you, and I commend the Commissioners on their approval this year, we talked about this last year, the homestead tax credit, effective on July 1 of 2024, that credit is dropping from 5% to 3%. What that means and what that does is it helps the residents of Garrett County, if it's your primary residence. What that 3% says is your tax bill on the Garrett County tax side can't go up more than 3% a year, and that's more within the inflationary numbers. So, that was a good thing for the Commissioners to drop that. What this chart shows you is a non-resident, and this is a scenario given, $200,000 was the old assessment, reassessed at 250. That 250 is spread over three years, and a non-resident would pick that up in even increments of $176 increase each year. If you're under the current homestead, 5%, that increase was spread over five years, and then you'll see that by dropping in three years, it's spread over seven years. So, it's a real benefit for the taxpayers of Garrett County, and when assessments are increasing the way that they have these last few times, it really protects the homeowner of Garrett County. This is just a revenue breakdown. It's no surprise, 87% comes from taxes, that's the breakdown of taxes, 8% come from the state government funding. Moving on to the expenditures. What I want to really focus on is that change column today. If you look at the bottom line, of course, we have a balanced budget of $110 million, about a 9.8% increase, and you'll see some big numbers in the change column. I want to focus on that. Really, I want to start off by saying that all of our internal departments really were good at holding the line this year with their request. We'll get to that here in a minute, but there was about six things that really drove the increases in this budget. I'm gonna start with those six factors that are driving the increase. The number one factor was, of course, outside agencies. Those agencies include a lot of you that have presented to the Commissioners. We have the Board of Ed in there, the college, the library, the Health Department, Chamber, Community Action, agencies like that. Those agencies increased our operating budget by $2.5 million, is like a 6% increase. A lot of people consider like the Sheriff's Office and some of the elected officials, the Judge's Office, the State's Attorney's Office as outside agencies. I don't really consider them much as outside agencies, they're all internal, they're funded by the Commissioners 100%. But if you were to bake that in, it would be about $2.9 million increase in outside agencies, or a 5.5% increase. I want to hone in on that education section, since there's big numbers there. If you look at the Garrett County Board of Education, you'll see a 1.569% increase, or 5.44. And again, you're gonna hear me say this over and over today, a lot of our decision-making right now is really, revolves around education funding and the blueprint funding that was implemented last year. Blueprint funding increased by $1.8 million this year. This was right in line with our projections that we had in finance. I think we said 1.8 around that, 1.7 and a half, somewhere around there last year. On paper, it shows 1.69, because if you recall, the Commissioners funded over the blueprint funding last year, you funded $232,674 additional dollars, so the increase on paper is $1.6 million. But the blueprint, local share funding actually went up $1.8 million. Want to give you a representation of what we're, this is probably the gist of our presentation today, and what's driving the expense budget, and why we are keeping the tax rate at $1.56 and what we plan to do with that money in the future, next year and in future years. This is a graph of local funding. The top piece there shows our share that will increase over the next nine years. The bottom is the state share, and again, these are all projections on a very, very complicated, convoluted formula that needs continually updated with real-time figures. But you can see here, like, over the next three years, we're projecting $7.9 million of operating increases just for the Board of Ed to fund their blueprint funding. Next year, we're projecting an increase of $2.8 million in operating funding, going to the Board of Ed, and then in FY '27, about $3.3 million. Again, 7.9 million over the next three fiscal years, and over nine years, you can see about a $15.8, $16 million of increased funding from the local government, just to fund the Moving on to Garrett College. College shows about a half a million dollars, $500,000, or 9.37% increase. If you recall, at the beginning of the legislation session this year, the college was hit pretty hard. They lost about $908,000 of funding, and then the state also cut some of their facilities' grant funding, about $200,000. During the session, I think they picked up about $81,000 by the end of the session, so they were still about $1 million short. The Commissioners have agreed for this year to cut that in half and try to help them out and fund that funding gap that they had. Ruth Enlow, that's a reasonable request. A lot of that is salary and fringe-driven, and then the scholarship program, which is Commissioner's Scholarship Program, is funded, it's an increase of 125. That's more in line with what the actuals are for this year. So we talked about the outside agencies. I'd say the second factor is the implementation of a salary study and investment in public safety. If you recall, last year, the Commissioners agreed to funding a salary study to address our high turnover rates. Just to give you some stats, prior to the salary study, we lost about 103 employees over a two-year period. Study helped bring salaries to the current market and help us to remain competitive with our peers in the private sector. The third factor driving our increase is our utility costs. We were currently under a five-year contract, electric cooperative contract, at .049 cents per kilowatt hour, and I don't know if anybody's paid attention to their electric bill recently, but we're projecting this will increase to almost double, or about .08 to .09 cents per kilowatt hour, which will have a significant impact on us. That contract expires on November 1st, and we go into a new contract. To give you an idea, we have about 122 utility accounts in the county that are gonna be affected by this. Fourth item, fourth factor that's driving the increase are software and maintenance agreements. Those are things that are hard to beat the market on. Almost every software or maintenance agreement that you have is gonna go up. To give you an idea of how this affects us throughout the county, public safety, we have body cam contracts, we have TASER agreements in place, we have medical inmate contracts. Last year, if you recall, we had the medically assisted treatments mandate that was pushed off on us. That came with some cost in this area. We have software agreements. I know our financial software package is going up 5% each year. We've got cybersecurity is a big expense for us. We've seen some of those agreements almost double in the IT world. They're coming off of like a three-year lock-in, they're renewing, and they're doubling. So you've got cybersecurity. You've got medical equipment for EMS, 911 system, election board poll books, and the list goes on and on for our software maintenance agreements. But I'm probably safe to say that all of them are going up at a minimum of 5%, and we're seeing some of them actually double. Insurances are another area, and you'll probably see this in your own personal lives, your homeowners and auto insurances, but the county's property liability and auto insurances, we're projecting to increase about 11%. And then, of course, capital expenditures, which I'm gonna get into a little later, our capital expenditures are increasing by $5.9 million, and we have an aggressive capital program this year of $14.3 million. One thing we focus on in finance, we really like to see that our operating costs aren't getting out of hand. If you look at that line item, you'll see that our operations are going up about $3.9 million, or 4.3%. We separate that out from our capital expenses, so 4.3, but really, the big driver that's distorting things are this section right here, the education section. 6.2% is the increase. So if we were to flat fund all that education section there, and take away the $2.24 million, really, the rest of county government, the expenses went up by 1.85%. So, that's pretty commendable, I think, for the rest of county government, and it's below the inflationary level, so that's something that we'd like to make sure we're in line This is our forecasting model. We're projecting out nine years now with our revenue stream and our expense stream. Of course, every year, our job is to have a balanced budget. So this is showing it unbalanced every year, it would just be a straight line. The top line is our, well, the top line on this is our expenses, the bottom line is our revenues. No, it's the opposite. Top line's our revenues, and the bottom line is our expenses on this particular chart. You'll see about 2029, we start to run out of money. We think we can prolong that to 2030, so about five years from now, if we aren't able to make adjustments, which it would be very significant adjustments to the county services, we would have to raise taxes about 2030. Our goal, obviously, is to keep expenses down, keep looking at expenses that we can trim, keep looking for new revenue sources. Again, the revenues on this particular chart are still, has some conservatism, conservatism built into it, so we might be able to prolong it even an extra year. But this is just sort of the warning sign of when we might run out of money and have to increase taxes if things don't change. This is a breakdown of the expenditures. You'll see, of course, education makes up 35%. If you look over to the left of that graph, you'll see capital of 13%. There's about $4.4 million of capital for education in that 13%. If you were to move that over, you'd be closer to 39% for education. This is our capital program, what we are recommending for this year. Again, there's a lot of routine capital. We have beefed up our capital program, and we will reduce it down in the future to plug the funding gap into operations to pay for the blueprint. State's Attorney, you'll see facility and maintenance, $1.9 or $2 million. I'll just flip through these, these are gonna be online once we leave here today, so you can look at it in further detail. There's the 911 vesta phone refresh that I mentioned, $1.5, $1.6 million. Public safety, a total of $1.7 million. Public Works, you'll see at the top, that's just the routine capital that we normally replace, it's usually around a million. That particular section's $1.1 million. The bottom section are all bridges. We are starting a very aggressive bridge replacement program, construction, replacement and maintenance program. That section down at the bottom is about $2 million for this year. Education, Commissioners made a commitment last year, $14.4 million over four years. This is the second year that we will fund that, and we put $4 million aside for the Southern Great Ban Project. We also make capital transfers to our enterprise funds. We have three enterprise funds, really four with Adventure Sports Center, but on this particular chart here, we're funding from the general fund, capital transfers out to the enterprise funds, the airport programs, their projects are at the top. Solid Waste and Recycling, you'll see a big ticket item there for another mandate by the state to put in a gas system infrastructure, so we put a placeholder in there for design and construction of that gas system for about $2.5 million. In a second, I'm gonna have Cody Brill, one of our financial analysts, to come up and explain more of what's going on at the landfill, and to give you an idea of what we have to face out there. have to face out there. All in all, our total capital expenditures were $14.3 million. So Cody, why don't you come on up? We're going to talk about the landfill real quick. Just to give you some idea, like, I don't think the public really understands how much a landfill costs us. I think we're very spoiled in Garrett County with some of our fees and our rate structure compared to other counties, and I think Cody's going to show that here in a second. To give you an idea, our current landfill site, we have about eight years remaining on that, maybe a little less, maybe a little more. It all depends on how much tonnage comes in in a year's time. I mentioned the $2.5 million gas infrastructure project. To close the current sites that we have, it costs about $8 million, in current dollars. We think that figure will be closer to 9.5 by the time we get to nine years. $9 million to close a landfill. We have been prudently saving that up and paying for that, so we have the money, we'll have cash when the time comes to close the landfill. Another figure to consider at the time of closing is we have to open up another one, if we choose to open up one, 14.5 or 14 to 15 million dollars. Thank you. I had one stashed in there. Thank you, thank you, appreciate that. 14 to 15 million dollars to open up a new landfill, okay? And then, you have to start saving to close that landfill if you open up a landfill. That in today's dollars, we're probably projecting about $10 million. So all those millions of dollars I just threw out at you equate to about $37 million in landfill costs just to run a landfill. So how do you pay for that? We pay for it through sticker fees, through your permits, annual permits, and tipping fees. That's the main source of funding for the landfill. We've been meeting with the division chief, Pat Kite, he's with us today, and we've been meeting with him and trying to really come up with a long-term plan for the landfill. And Cody's been working on that project, and I'm going to turn it over to him right now.
Okay. First, I'll stop by saying I want to thank Mr. Weeks for giving me the opportunity to kind of look into these numbers and report them to you today. We'll go through this relatively quick, because I know this is a smaller part of the budget. If you gentlemen have any questions as we go, feel free to stop me. Okay. So we're going to look at where we are today at a financial position for our two major programs in our waste management, and that is our permit and sticker program and our scales program slash trash that's coming across the scales we wait every day. Currently, we have about 1.2 million tons permitted at our current site. 875,000 tons, that's actually at the conclusion of the last fiscal year, so we're getting close, obviously, to finishing up this one. We're averaging, you know, well above 30,000 tons a year, so you can kind of add another 30,000 onto that number, and we're looking about somewhere around seven and a half years left with our current setup. Unfortunately, the process to open up a new landfill is about six, six and a half years long at least, by the time you plan it, get that reviewed by the Department of Environment, all the permits you've got to go through, and then obviously the procurement of those services and construction, it's a very long period. So we're only looking at about a year and a half worth of wiggle room here, so that's why today, we're kind of looking at what the future plan of our landfill is. First, our collection sites, just to give you an idea of how much this costs, so like Mr. Weeks alluded to, unfortunately, education is driving a lot of our financial decisions today and over the next, probably, six or seven years. So if you're doing the math in your head, we're talking about looking at a budget shortfall about 2030, that's also about the same time we'd be helping you open up a new landfill. So we're doing what we can now to kind of make that as self-sufficient as possible and then not use either general tax revenues or any special levies, which I believe last time we had to open cells, it was what, four cents? Yeah, on the assessment to open up a new landfill, so. This is our sticker and permit program. Currently, they're $75. We have six sites not including the landfill, so there really is a seventh. We just kind of looked at, you know, we looked a lot about, you know, what, where are people going, what sites are they using, how much trash are they bringing in? Because obviously, when someone buys a sticker, when they bring that trash in, we don't then get that revenue when they come across the scales, so how much trash is that costing us to put it in the ground? There's a lot of, you know, there's a collection site attendant at every site, you know, five days a week. So currently, that program is costing, really, the general fund about, just about $30,000 more than what it brings in. And just kind of looking at comparative pricing, currently, we're at $75 a bag. Allegheny County, or $75 a year. Allegheny County doesn't buy bag, part of their budget crunch. This year, they're just going to increase the price to $2. So if you just have a, you know, just two bags a week's $200, you know, I think that's not a lot, and those aren't contractor bags. Contractor bags are actually double, so that'd be $4 per contractor bag. So even if $2, I think it's probably on the low end of what an average household makes, you're looking at about 200 bucks to get rid of that trash. Washington County charges 130 bucks for a sticker. So I think we're well below what's kind of being charged in our surrounding counties. Most mineral county, or most counties in West Virginia, including Mineral County, Preston County, they don't even have collection sites, per se. So in addition to that, we do offer, like I said, we have six collection sites, landfill's a seventh, so we have more than Allegheny County and Washington County combined as far as collection sites. So I think we do give a good service to our citizens at honestly a lot lower price than what our two Western Maryland counterparts charge. Okay. And then, talking about the future of our waste management, obviously, option one was expand, I think, at least two new cells at our current landfill, so that, this came from kind of the estimate. If you can kind of familiarize yourself, the center of this picture here is where we're dumping trash now. Lee J. Pond by the left as you come up, and the new cells, which I see on the left hand is when you make that turn. And then, the second option would be to construct a transfer station and to haul it to Tucker County. Luckily, we do, we're fortunate to have a pretty large landfill close by to where the majority of our trash comes from, which is obviously open in the southern end. So that's just an example of what the one looks like in, outside of Romney. It's really simple, it's a metal building, concrete floor, they throw trash on the ground, scoop it up, load it, and they actually take it to Tucker as well. But to do that, I think it cost, I think A250 was the last time we checked, per ton, if you want to go to that transfer station, because they've got to truck it up the mountain and then pay $53 to get rid of it at Tucker. So those are kind of the two options that we're looking at, is what the future of waste management is. So we try to get a per-ton cost. This would be full accrual, all-in, open the landfill, run the landfill for how many permitted tons you have, close the landfill, and what the cost is per ton of that. Currently, we're at $60 per ton, that's about how much it costs the county to get rid of that trash. A new cell, more expensive. Unfortunately, it's going to be more expensive to open, more expensive to close, like everything else we do, and we only get about 60% of the tonnage for that, for those additional cells. So it's more expensive to open, more expensive to close, and we can put less trash in the ground. So that's why you see that price going up. And then, the transfer out of the county is about $85 a ton. So we wanted to do our due diligence and see if it was a close number, if we achieved it for the citizens of Garrett County if we were to truck that over. And obviously, a sandy check right away, it's hard to come up with financial viability when, you know, Tucker's going to charge you $53 to take the trash and it's not even there yet or collected or anything like that, so. At this point, is our recommendation in finance, which I believe alongside our solid waste department, that we look to construct a new cell on our current, our current site. And also, as we looked at our pricing, like I said before, we, the general fund or general tax revenues, when you look at a full accrual price of our scales programs, that's just, you know, revenue coming across the scales, how much does it cost us to manage that trash? We're losing about $300,000 a year. Now luckily, that does include the price of opening the cells that we're currently using, which has already been paid for. But it is our recommendation also that we raise the scale rate from $50 to $60.25. And what that'll do is, since we've already, you know, obviously paid that accrual price of opening the current landfill, we can raise about $4.5 million in additional revenues between now and the time our current landfill would close. And then, hopefully, with our current assumptions, with no major changes in regulation, and that kind of environment would be, that we wouldn't need any kind of general tax revenues or any special tax levies to be able to open up the new landfill. And a second piece, our permit fees from 75 to 85, that just brings that program into, you know, near break-even position as far as, you know, covering the expenses of managing that trash. So it's important to look at this as, as we come to the end of the life of this landfill, or these landfill cells, and up against, you know, potential funding crunch with the Board of Education, that all we can do now to prepare for that eventuality in the future and to kind of offload some of that burden of the general fund over to our solid waste.
Thank you, Cody. Let's have a quick summary now, then we'll finish up here. These are sort of the highlights of this budget. Didn't mention this at first, but we cut about a million dollars from the requested budget out of the operations. We're proposing a $95.7 million operating and a $14.3 million capital budget for a total operating capital budget of 110.1 million. We funded the operations of outside agencies, additional 2.5 million. Combined operating capital funding for these outside agencies totaled 48.4 million, or 44% of the total operating and capital budget. Blueprint funding increased Garrett County's local share mandate by 1.8 million. Budgetary impact is 1.57 million. Funding, 4.05 million for year two of our four-year, $14.4 million commitment for the Southern Great Band project. And this is going to continue to be our story for probably several years. Our biggest future challenge is education funding, projecting a $15.8 million increase in blueprint funding for public schools over the next nine years. Over the next three years alone, we're projecting about $7.9 million increase in operation Over 1.2, I didn't really get into this, but over 1.2 million will be invested in broadband and local business development. We've made great strides the last couple of years on broadband projects. No new positions. No real property tax rate increase, rate will remain at $1.56. No increases to the water and sewer ad valorem tax rates, and actually, four of those districts out of the 12 will be a reduction in the rates. No income tax rate increase, rate will remain at 2.65. I think it's still making Garrett County the third lowest in the state. I know there's been some movement this budget season with both property tax rates and income tax rates in other counties. I don't know how all that settled out, but I know, I know of two that have increased their property tax rates, and I think it's all tied to education funding as well. I think that's the story I'm hearing. No reserves were used to balance this budget and no new general fund debt, and we continue to maintain our 10% rainy day fund. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Commissioner, but if you have any comments or questions, my email certainly, online. You can email me with any questions, or County Administrator Kevin Knoll with any type of questions, or send comments to that email address, comments@garretcounty.org.
Scott, I'll ask you to remain up here just for a couple minutes in case we have any questions from the audience that may require your assistance to answer. Before I get into any of that, any questions from the commissioners? Any comments?
I almost fell asleep.
I'll, just a couple of comments. First of all, I want to commend Scott, you and Cody and the whole staff. It's a great presentation, a lot of thought went into it. I know a lot of, lot of man-hours and debate and internal conversation about the landfill. Not something I think the average Garrett County citizen sits around and thinks about, what an, you know, an exorbitant cost that we all share over time, and, you know, I think you guys have done a great job of analyzing that, looking at the best possible path forward, so I just want to commend you for that. And for anyone paying any attention, I say it all the time, and this goes, shows why, I don't think you're going to find a better finance department in the state. You know, just look in the newspaper, and I'm not going to condemn any other district, but you don't see that coming out of Garrett County. And Jeff and Cody and Scott and everyone else that works over there, just the duty in looking after the taxpayer dollars and making sure everything matches what it's supposed to, putting budget together that I think reflects our priorities and tries to plan for the future at the same time, just a great job. Scott, I do have one question. What is the, what's the inflation rate right now?
It's about, I think, 3.2, 3.4, somewhere in there. Do you know, Cody?
Yeah. Three and a half. And the reason I bring that up, if you pull the education funding out, which we have very little to no control over, and you look at the general, just the general government budget, it's 1.85%. So you're about half of what the national inflationary environment is. So again, just, that's, that's excellent job. I mean, that's, can't thank you enough for that. I do want to mention again, we talk a lot about blueprint, and we have for the last five years and we will for the next five or six. If you were at the chamber breakfast this morning, Senator McCain, Delegate Heimball talked a lot about that at the state level and what that looks like and how their funding is falling short to fund that at the state level. All across the state right now, all you see is taxes going up to fund, basically, to fund the school budget for every other county. We're in a position, we don't need to do that, as of right now. And a lot of that was foresight and planning, looking forward, looking ahead years, this time last year, we were looking at probably 2028, 2029 is when we might have to raise taxes, based on some of the things we're doing. We're sitting here now talking about 2030, 2031, and hopefully, in 2030, 2031, we're talking about 2033 or 2034. It's just going to take a total team effort, to be cliche, to try to get us in that position. We have front-loaded with this budget some of the capital that we owe Garrett County Public Schools, we made a commitment for to renovate Southern Middle School, Broadford. We have that 14-odd million out there that we've spread out over a couple of years, putting a little more into that this year, in case we have to put more into operating next year, some other things. So I think that's noteworthy. The whole plan moving forward with the landfill and, you know, hopefully, and probably not having to add an ad valorem tax on top of everything else, to me, that's huge. I'm an anti-ad valorem guy, you know that pretty well from our years together, but I think that's commendable. The fact that we're able to hold the line on all the ad valorem's or cut them is noteworthy as well, and, I mean, we didn't fund everybody everything they wanted, but I don't think we gutted anybody either in this budget. So I think all in all, we've done very well with the budget proposal. As always, very curious to see what the general public has to say. You can email comments, email Kevin, email or call or stop any one of us. But as good as this budget has been in an environment that it could have been much worse, we know what's coming, right? And the Board of Ed, and to be very clear, because a lot of people still don't understand the blueprint, or what it's about, or why it's here, or anything else, and it's a five-hour conversation, but the Garrett County Board of Education didn't come to us. But the Garrett County Board of Education didn't come to us and ask us for $14 million over the next several years. The state said, this is what you will give. So the bad thing for the school system, and I know most people don't know this, yes, they're going to get a lot more money, but the state has gotten a lot more strict with how they can spend that money. So where they used to have a lot of flexibility in how they could spend that money, as blueprint gets further implemented, the restrictions come in and they can't move it as much as they used to be able to to meet the needs of the system. Their hands are getting tied more and more with this as well. So it'll be a challenge as we move through it. Another challenge on the horizon is going to be what happens with college funding. You know, it was cut significantly this year. Is that going to be, is that the new normal? Is that, you know, an anomaly? We don't know the answer to that yet. So there are certainly things to be concerned about moving forward in the out-years. But to me, the takeaway from this budget is what looked like a conversation about raising taxes in the near future is now a conversation about raising taxes much further down the line, and hopefully much further down the line. At the same time, we're not reducing services to the citizens, which I think is, again, commendable. So having said that, great presentation, great job with the budget. Any comments, feel free to make them if you're not here. If you're in the audience, before we have any questions or comments about the budget, are there any questions or comments on anything non-budget related? If not, do we have any questions or comments on the budget presentation and proposal?
Well, is everything you presented there, will that be online?
Yes. Yeah, if it's not online tonight, it'll be on first thing tomorrow morning.
Good question.
And also, we'll give a breakdown of your budget for everyone to see.
The only thing I'm going to put online is what you saw here today. Later on, when they actually approve the budget, we'll put more detail on there. But if you have questions or anything, feel free to reach out. I'll give you every backup to every figure that was presented here today.
Sure, if you have a question about a certain item.
Yes, yep, yep, absolutely, yep.
It will be online, you're safe.
Yes.
Good question, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, with that, unless there's anything else from the commissioners, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Any adjourn, thank you all very much.